Hey, who's votes?
I don't think we have either. Nice to meet you.
Oh, here we are. I can have everybody's attention for a moment, please. We're going to get started here shortly. Tonight is a dual purpose meeting. We have our township board meeting and we also have a joint meeting with the planning commission. There'll be two times for public comment towards the beginning of our meeting and at the end of our meeting as normal. And then the joint meeting is for the planning commission to have conversation with the township board regarding the update on the master plan. It is not a public hearing and we will not be taking public comment at that time. So we'll get started here right now, as a matter of fact. If you'd all rise, please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Pam, there might have to be more copies.
Yes, you may. Erickson.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
House.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Lad.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Eden.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
Mochler.
Here.
That's awesome. We're all present. We don't have any changes to the agenda. You did get the conundrums that were set out. Solid or tender motion?
Support.
Been motioned and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. Next is approval of the consent agenda, the regular board meeting minutes from December 6th, 2022, the closed session meeting minutes from December 6th, 2022, excuse me, the treasurer's report from November 30th, 2022, the treasurer's report, December 31st, 2022, clerk's warrants and bills, January 10th, 2023.
Support.
Been motioned and supported to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to communications, we have the Livingston County Sheriff's Report dated November 30th, 2022, the Livingston County Board of Commissioners Annual Report dated 2022, the planning commission approved meeting minutes, September 13th, 2022, planning commission approved meeting minutes, October 11th, 2022, planning commission meeting synopsis, November 2, 2022, the planning commission meeting synopsis, December 13th, 2022, and finally, the planning commission meeting synopsis, January 10th, 2023.
Support.
It's been motioned and supported to receive communications and place it on the file. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If aye, those opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to public remarks, if anybody would like to make any public remarks about any of our agenda items, please come up, have a seat and address the board, please.
Where do you want me?
Right here.
Good to sit, that's nice. Jeanette Robana, Fuller Drive, and also I represent the watch group. First of all, I just want to mention that the planning committee, especially the last meeting, was just fantastic and just thank them for that. It was, if anybody hasn't come to a planning commission meeting, it was just, it was wonderful, the information that was being provided, the questions that were answered, et cetera. I think everyone got a lot out of it, so it was a really great meeting. And on that end also, the planner, Zach Michaels, did an awesome job in answering our questions also. So I really thank him for that. The one thing I wanted to ask, I know that you can't answer questions, but I'll just bring it to your attention or one of the questions that I have. The meeting agenda says you're approving the closed session meetings, meeting minutes from December 6th, but I didn't see anything on there for the public to view as far as meeting minutes. Okay? Number two, the new business item, number six, says 23-24 budget discussion. So that looks to me like it's new expenditures that have never been talked about before. It has to do, if you've all read the agenda, it had, item number six says it's about sidewalks for out here and it's for $33,000. I see one bid on there. I'd just like to point out that for months now, the public has been attending the planning commission meetings. We've never heard anything about any plans for the 10 acres that this building sits on. In fact, it was news to all of us when we heard about the quarter million parking lot redo that only showed one contractor bid, which was approved right away and frankly, it was the fastest work I ever saw get done, it got done right away. Why are sidewalks important at this time when there's no long-term plan for this property? If you look at the diagram in the agenda for the $33,000, it essentially closes in the parking lot on that side. Is that what the people want? And what if plans in the future determine we need more parking and then the sidewalks need to be torn up? My point is, this plan has never been brought before the people because I don't see that there's any plan for this 10 acres. Where was the survey for this? I would like to see this budget plan to spend $33,000 of the people's money halted until there's a firm plan on how these 10 acres are going to be used or, you know, at least some ideas being thrown out there. In fact, the topic of this land's development, this 10 acres, was brought up at the planning commission meeting and it was stated that it would be addressed. So I really don't think, I'm asking you board members to not vote for this because this isn't in any plan anywhere. We need to see what the plan is for this 10 acres and I'm not sure that it's in. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Got to be good where they grow. I can see some use for the sidewalk. One of my concerns is the price. I just, I read everything today, I just found out that that was adding on. I find it hard to live without spending that much money for engineering. We should have something on the engineering plan already drawn up, we could do driveway. It's just as much as measure off the parking lot and put two strings up and put a sidewalk in. That's a lot of money. I'd like to see some more bids. My brother works for the construction company, they did the, I don't know if you did it with them, I don't know, but I'd like to see one bid. Other than that, the planning commission, I'll tell you right now, it was good working. I mean, it's hard to get volunteers in here, you know, and we just, I mean, there were some days where you'd get, you know, a little back and forth, but basically it went pretty good. I mean, we got a lot of work to do and I think we did good. I mean, I think they did good and, I mean, it was nice, it was relaxing. You sit there and you add your comments and, you know, it was a little not so formal, which was nice as a community, you don't want too much formal. So it worked out good. Pam, thank you for putting out the agenda. I really appreciate it and I'd like to have it in a more timely manner. I know you guys say you can't, I've been to this township, I've come to meetings for years and we've always had it. We've had it out there, we've been waiting for the meeting, so I really appreciate it getting it out there early. I know there's going to be mistakes. I mean, you should try hard to have, go over it and have it right when you put it out the first time, but I can understand if you have to come back to add something on. But other than that, I would appreciate you having it out there for us. Other than that, I've got some other stuff to talk about that aren't listed on the agenda and I'll talk to you at the second comment.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else? If there's none, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. So we're going to move on to the joint discussion with the planning commission. Zach Michaels, the planner here, I believe has a presentation that he wants to give us to start this off, am I correct?
Well, it'll be more introduction for discussion.
That might be good.
I'm going to bring this to help time myself so I don't go too long. First, I apologize for my informal clothing. I usually like to dress a little fancy for joint meetings, but I thought I'd have time to go to the post office and go home. I forgot that yesterday was a federal holiday, so the post office sucked up all the time with that, so thank you for that. What have you got up there? So, quick introduction of where we're at. We started this process a while ago. The last time the township had a new master plan was 2012. In 2019, you guys looked at and said, it's still pretty good, we're going to make a note of a couple of things. So right now, we're doing a whole new master plan. That's not to say we threw the whole thing out, that was kind of our basis starting framework, but there's a lot of things that we've added and a lot of things that we've changed. Process wise, I'm going to say you guys have had a very robust process. For the state of Michigan, you're basically only required to hold one public hearing and it's at the end. So it's hard to adjust and get input from the community. You guys have had a community-wide survey, we sent out mailers to everyone in the community and thank you for staff for helping with that. And you've had three visioning sessions that folks came in that we were able to test concepts on there. So you've done a lot more already than what the state requires for you. So for tonight, I'm going to pop down. Oh, you've already got it up there. This is just kind of a quick where we're at in the process. We did get a little bit delayed, there's a bit more effort working on the survey at the front than we anticipated and sorting out some details. And that pushed back the visioning sessions because we wanted to be able to test things that we heard from the survey and ask more detailed questions. But we're still on track to get through there, get through it within time. We did a little bit of wiggle room in there. And from this, this is my little internal tracker, you can see basically all the background articles are pretty firmed up with the planning commission. This is a great time to have this meeting because we're starting to pivot into the forward-looking. We've already done a draft of the goals and objectives and the next real big step is going to be the future land use plan. So it's great, the planning commission has been working hard on that, but you guys are the policy folks, so it's great to get that input from you. All right, so the couple of things that'll be most useful for us is the folks helping to prepare this for you is if there's anything major that we have missed. Now, we come in, we have lots of resources, we've got all that input, the planning commissioners here, but you guys have a different perspective at the township board. So is there anything that we've just completely missed that's important in there? Another question, this will be mostly for the goals and objectives, is this consistent with your expected vision for the township? If it's significantly off, now is a good time to reset and repivot that direction. The last question is, and this will be tough because it's primarily background information right now, but would you generally be able to support what you're seeing if it came before you? If it's something really off, now is again, is a great time to pivot that. Does that sound good? Place setting for everyone?
It's a great place setting, thank you.
All right. So as I said, we mostly follow the structure for your current master plan and how things were laid out. There were a couple of cases where we split some articles, so your current one, social analysis and housing analysis are kind of stuck together. It was really big, so we split it apart so it's easier to chunk and understand those. We also added a natural environment analysis, that's kind of important when you've got lakes and rivers and wetlands and unhealy spots. So now, unless there are any questions, we'll jump right in to the different articles. And I'm not going to read them verbatim, I'm just going to try to do highlights on there. Do know that in the draft, it's still a working draft. It's not super fancy, so there are some spots where things will hang over in weird spots. It's going to be made proper lining with pictures added and introduction covers all that fun stuff. And I will say, we have gotten a lot of nice pictures from members of the community. My plug is, if you've got some, go to the project website or Bug Ross will take more of those to put in here. It adds really nice flavor and helps illustrate things. So the introduction, very similar to what you currently have. This is meant for folks who may just be moving into the community or are starting to get interested in planning and zoning to kind of lay the works of what this thing is, why does it exist, how do we do it? Again, very similar to what your current one is, we've made some of it a little bit more robust in there, just to provide a bit more context. And add the history of the previous one. So unless there are any comments, we'll jump into community character. And this is, I love this community character section. It's, I haven't seen anything exactly like this in any other master plan I've seen, so I'm going to steal it and run with it for other communities. It lays out kind of what's special about Tyrone Township, what you tell people about it, why you moved here. And again, it follows a similar process to your, similar to the current one, where it talks about the things that are the most defining characters and define what makes you special and different. Talk about the history of the community, the importance of open space and the rural character, the lakes, the US 23 corridor, city of Fenton was identified also as a very important influence, city of Linden, another important, not as much, that's why it got second behind Fenton, and Heartland Township, and then Partialville. And as we go to the page with the map there, know that some of the maps are going to be fuzzy. We're playing with ways to insert the PDFs without making it ridiculously large, so that's portable and easier for folks to get access to, so know that those are going to change. And you guys will also, at the end of the day, get the nice proper PDF files so you can print it up on two foot by three foot sheets or even go to Costco and get a print on a medical sheet to stick on the wall if you want. One thing I will note is that your location map is significantly larger than what most other communities like to have in there and that was a direction that you gave us, that folks identified with Ann Arbor, Detroit, and Lansing and Flint. And that kind of, folks have said that they work in all those places, so we thought it was important to put you in that context. All right. Any questions or issues with that one? All right. And we, as we started getting this, one thing that you'll see really neat, which was pushed for your planning commission, is instead of having all of the tables and information in the middle of the text, which can make it useful, it also makes it very long and boring and awful to look at. So instead, the direction we see from them was leave the graphs in there, the graphs tell the story, put the tables somewhere else so if folks want to see it, they can see where it came from. But we kind of split the difference, we didn't put them all the way back in a separate appendix because if you're flipping back and forth, you'd lose your place. Instead, there's essentially like a separate appendix for each article, so you can go back just a couple of pages and still be where you're at. So every article in the background and further on starts with an overview. It's kind of like the executive summary. So if you take away a couple of things about what's going on with the population in the community, here are the highlights. Your highlights, you're growing, you're not growing as fast as you used to be. Your population's getting older. Your household size is noticeably bigger than other communities around you, but it's coming down, which makes sense as your population's growing, you're not having the kids at home anymore.
Can I ask a question? You had the comment that we're not growing as fast as we used to be. However, we had astronomical growth, the county had 10% growth, Tyrone Township had 20% growth, which is, we were probably the largest growing township in the county. So I'm just, is that, are we talking the same language when you say that or am I missing something?
Yep, so when I, I will say, I frame it by the entire period. So the largest percentage growth you guys had, I think, was 1970 to 1980. But that's because you started with a really small number and it's really easy to get bigger. So your growth is still healthy, especially compared to most of the surrounding communities, but because you're so big, the percentage isn't as big, if that makes sense.
Right, but there's still a good amount of people moving in our county.
Yep. I think the...
I just wanted to clarify that because...
Yep. From 2010 to 2020, it was just under 2,000.
It was about 10% growth at that time and then we were almost 20% at the time.
And I want to say, you guys started this at the exact right time because the census numbers from 2020 started to drop. So this is about as fresh as you can get. You'd think 2021 you'd be able to, no, census won't tell you anything until two years later when required by law. So you guys got this at the right time, otherwise you'd be using 10-year-old data and that's not so helpful. For age distribution, as we mentioned, we've got a series over a couple of times, you are getting older. So that's something we've been keeping in the back of mind for, housing may be different, so maybe that affects the type of housing that you allow. It's going to be different types of parks, so instead of having a bunch of basketball courts, maybe pickleball. Or pickleball and basketball, at least as long as there's a pickleball option there. Nothing too interesting with sex distribution, it's consistent with what you'd expect. Racial composition is consistent with what you'd expect. Education, the highlight from that is you guys are pretty well-educated in Tyrone Township compared to most of your neighbors. It makes sense when you look at the jobs you folks have here, it tends to be the ones that require higher education. And so I ask my question for social analysis, were there any surprises besides how I poorly phrased that one or is there anything else that you would like to see in there? Or is it pretty...
I think it's pretty spot on. Nothing jumped off at me.
All right. For the housing analysis then, again, we split this off because we thought it was kind of important. The couple of takeaways, the number of households you have in the community are growing, but the size of the households are decreasing, so that means it's, you hit the spot where you have more people in an even greater amount of houses, if that makes sense. So instead of having four people per house, you're at two and a half people per house now. So the number of houses will be growing even if your population isn't growing as fast as it used to. Your households are larger than most surrounding community. The occupancy rate is pretty good. I'm going to jump back near, I see you're scrolling through there. One of the things that really popped out, and it was important for us to document in here, is the amount of, the type of dwelling units you have. I think I'm on page 47 now. No, or 49. So it's important to include a lot of information in your master plan that you may not think you have immediate use for and this is kind of a case in point. So we've documented here, you guys have a lot of single-family houses compared to the county or the state. That makes sense for townships because it's hard to do multifamily or other things when you have to have a septic feeder. The other thing that really pops there is you see the gray, that's the amount of mobile home dwelling units you guys have. That is substantially higher than the county or the state and most of your neighbors. So the reason why it's important to document in here is in the goals and objectives, we say we're not that interested in having a lot more mobile home parks because we've got more than our fair share. So it really pops in that graph. And that's why we've added a separate mobile home section in the housing. That wasn't in the previous one. If you're going to make a position, you have to back it up with documentation of what's going on in the ground. As far as new single-family dwellings, you've got pretty decent numbers that are consistent. One thing I'm going to give a kudos out to your staff for is the housing sales information. I have not seen this in any other master plan. We kind of, as part of the survey, had to struggle, what's affordable housing? What does that mean here? So your staff was able to provide us with the sales information for all of your properties from 2006 until the end of last year. And this is based on arm's length, which means you're not selling it to a relative or to a trust or something. It's one person, so pretty close to the market rate. And as you would imagine, your prices are going up. Right now, well, before they start raising their rates, we found that the average household, the household income to support buying a house here is somewhere between 90 and 110,000, which is within the range of what your household income is. So that's pretty good as far as affordability goes right now. I did have a question and it was raised up the planning commission, folks, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a potential interest in having that comparison of arm's length sales in surrounding communities. Getting that information is relatively easy, processing it is a little more time-intensive because you have to regularize and do stuff. So before we spent the time doing that, we wanted to see if that was important to you guys.
What's the value proposition of doing that? What do we get in return for doing that? Is it just something that's going to sit on a piece of paper, two people are going to look at or is there...
Well, and I would defer to what the planning commissioners were thinking of. The values that you can say either were consistent with the cost of housing or neighbors were consistent or, oh my gosh, were really expensive compared to them or, oh my gosh, were really low. So it gives you kind of that metric to see how you fit. Sometimes it can be useful, sometimes it isn't. I didn't include it in the original draft because I had that same question of it would take a bit of time to do and I wasn't sure if it added a whole bunch of value.
Yeah, the cost-to-value, cost-reward scenario was kind of bouncing on my head. You know, I think that's something that we should lead to the professionalism of a quality real estate agent to provide for prospective homebuyers, wouldn't you think? Does anybody think differently?
All right.
Can we answer that question?
Thank you. And that's it for the housing. So I guess my question, is there anything that we missed? Anything that you think is important to document that's not in there? Is there anything that's a surprise for anybody? Surprises can be good too, I guess. So economic analysis article, there was a big change in this from your previous one. A couple of takeaways, that your household income is higher than most other communities in the area in the township. Most folks who live here drive somewhere else to work. There are some folks who live here and work here and that's, the data that we've got is pre-pandemic, so we know what's off. We're going to have the asterisk there that says, hey, this is before COVID happened. And there are limited opportunities to work in the township, you guys all know that, it's just important to document. The interesting things in here. One thing that did stand out for me on page 57 is the unemployment rate of folks in Tyrone Township. It's generally all red, I'm just involved with what's going on in the state and the county. But when COVID happened, you guys did pretty well. And so at the back of my mind, that tells me that most of the folks who work here have the opportunity to work remotely. So that means there's a bit more flexibility with how folks are able to work. The real big change happened in the commercial analysis article, or subarticle on page 5K. Your current master plan goes through a significant labor-intensive process of defining what the trade area and the value of the... the trade area and the value of the trade area is and the potential for square footage of commercial space and that type of stuff. Part of our discussions at the planning commission were, we're in the Fenton trade area, we're in the Highland trade area, we're in the Linden trade area, there are established commercial centers there that people are going to go to. Yes, we're going to have commercial, but it's different than if we're, the city of Anar are figuring out how much office space we need. And so a lot of that detailed stuff got cut out. And so one question for you is if you're comfortable with that approach of not going five or six pages into how to figure out what's the, the population in Tyrone Township is support for office space?
We haven't had any new office space in the last twenty-five years. I don't see it in the next five years. I think that might be a discussion for, or revision that we have coming up five years from now. There's still some room in Hartland, there's still some room in Fenton, there's still some room in Linden. So until we start getting to the overflow point, I think it's kind of muted at this time unless everybody thinks differently.
No, that's, that's precisely what we were discussing. The need for office space has disappeared in a lot of circumstances.
Yeah, I'd hate to be the person, you know, now that we, companies are zooming and, and, you know, Microsoft meetings or whatever you want to call it, there's a lot more people working around it. I hate to be the guy with available office space.
Uh huh, yep. Well, even for the, the commercial, I got this on M fifty-nine, and there's still that leg of the roundabout, you know, wire that goes off into the field. So we, we did a pretty good look internally with staff of looking at what's going on in surrounding communities. And look to Fenton, they've got a really large industrial park, for example, a hundred and sixty acres. To the south of you, they have planned, I think, six hundred or so acres of industrial research and office, and it's got a lot of vacant sites still. So that's why we were like, okay, everyone's telling us, we like being rural, we don't want to have a bunch of commercial stuff here, so.
I think Fenton, or it's Fenton Township is bringing water through too, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that could even be a potential further expansion.
Leroy and I believe talks about it.
Yeah. And Rose closed it.
All right. So there's just a very short version of the, in there. Industrial analysis, as you guys know, we've got the one right now. And this is a preview for the goals and objectives in the future land use plan. What we have been hearing is that it, it may be the time to make an adjustment to your future land use plan that calls for a massive chunk of the township to be planned industrial and research and office. Based on the supply in surrounding communities and based on the preferences that have been described by the planning commission in the survey and the visioning sessions.
Yeah, I think that having that put at the right location should be something that we look at going forward. You know, one of the, you know, we're talking about zoning, we have that, that pyro district. We just need to disband that. It hasn't serviced well, it's not doing us any favors right now. And, you know, outside of, you know, the industrial extractive type business, your gravel pits and your asphalt and stuff, you know, exclude as much of that as possible. And, you know, look at having some flexibility in our, our commercial industrial, but, you know, also making sure that it stays where it used to stay. I think pyro handcuffs a lot now.
And you have multiple flavors of it as well.
Well, you picked a whole area and said, you can only put this here, and you can only put this here, and you can only put this here. But what if somebody bought this parcel because it had less REUs on it and wanted to put this there, but you couldn't do it because it needed to go right here? It just, it seemed a little.
So we are jumping a little ahead, but the, the currents I've been feeling is very similar is that it's time to recheck that area and, and give it a closer look than just copying and pasting what we have. We do mention US twenty-three, it's a very important aspect of life here and connections. And one of the things that isn't in your current master plan is the character of the non-residential development. It's different than, than in the city of Fenton and in Highland as well. And.
One thing I'd like to add about that, about the twenty-three corridor is around two thousand and three, we made a huge investment, well over twenty million dollars, in installing a regional sewer system. And payment for that was predicated on future growth. It almost bankrupted our township at one point. But we have resuscitated that, and, you know, we're making the bond payments, we're not loaning money to make the bond payments anymore. It still owes us two and a half million dollars of current residents' money, and it's just not being used for township purposes. And, you know, I don't want to totally eliminate growth from that because that bond still needs to be paid. And I'd hate to have to get back to where we start tasking our residents to make that bond payment again. So just remember to keep those things in mind. You know, the township had made the decision that that's what they were going to do years ago, and they were kind of, that's something that's stuck in our side. So just remember that as we plan and move forward that, you know, I mean, I'm not saying just throw something in there to, to sell REUs, but we need to be very smart when we do that.
But one of the things, your master plan process has created a lot of maps. Actually, our GIS mapping fellow's like, oh my gosh, another map for them. And it's annoying for him, but it's great for the planning process because one of the things, we've, we've got the map that shows here's where the line runs. And so we're, we're very cognizant of, we want to take advantage of that and make sure that it feeds the system and the system feeds it in the right places. Likewise, the map with the natural resources, it tells us here are the places where you can't put septic fields or where you don't want stuff. So we're, we're trying to, going to be very aware of that as we, we start to pencil in the map. Let's see. Not so much for planning thing, but it's, it's good to document the township's resources. Your wise value is going up pretty well. Not a lot of personal property because you don't have a lot of manufacturing, and your revenues have been pretty healthy. There's been a very good increase in the state revenue.
We're on page five thirteen, right?
Yep. So whoever's making sure the state's giving you a fair share of that is doing a very good job getting that up there. All right. Anything else for economic analysis article that stood out or something you think we missed? All right. Natural environment, this is a brand-new article. I was a little surprised it wasn't in there previously because you look at a community with lakes and rivers and stuff, I think it's important. The couple of important takeaways is you do have surface water bodies that people live on, which is kind of unique and neat. You get the up-north field without having to go up north. You are fortunately near the top of the headwaters of the Chilwosse, so you don't have a lot of pollution issues downriver, like the folks downriver from the city where they keep dumping the stuff out is on the Huron, so that's helpful. We're also are aware that most of the folks here are on wells. We are, we are getting information for elevated arsenic levels, just so folks can plan, and we don't want to put a lot of houses in those areas because it's a lot more challenging to put the filters and do the water. But also, we're documenting that it's important to be aware of what's going on with land uses because people rely on wells, and we want to make sure we don't put anything bad into the water that we drink. So we talked about surface water, your lakes and the rivers. We document the importance of groundwater and wetlands. You guys are very fortunate to not have much floodplains in here. It's a very limited area compared to folks downriver where it gets pretty big. Your soils are pretty good for development in most areas. There are some rocky spots, but you got treated pretty nicely by the glaciers when they left here. And you do have some spots with fun slopes. I am curious, is it, do you folks call it Kandahar or Summit? What's the preferred?
It depends on how long you've lived here.
Okay.
You know, a lot of the older people will call it Kandahar and new people will call it Summit. So probably both.
We, we have added maps here that do show the different types of quality of soil for farmland, that again is very useful for defining areas that you would want to try to preserve, especially if it's high quality. And that's something you can even incorporate into your zoning ordinance. Dark skies were important to folks, and it's something that, growing up in a rural community myself, it was always important. That city's that direction, that city's that direction, and you're where you're at. And then the land capacity, that component, that's kind of where we put all the things together on one map that make it difficult to use property. So that's going to be one of the maps we're going to as we're filling out the map.
Two things, elevation, the top of the Kandahar there, that's the highest point in Livingston County. And then Lake Tyrone headwaters actually drain all the way out into Saginaw Bay. We followed that on a map one day when we were doing the sewer systems for Lake Tyrone.
I'm going to put that in there. Those are both fantastic.
Sure, it is at the top of Dead Hill. It's, it's, the, it is, we do have the highest point, so. It's one of the two.
We've got the topography in here.
Yeah, we do. It's kind of small. Well, there's the elevation slope map, seven twelve.
Yeah. Yeah, he had to do really big intervals because otherwise your map got really painful for the eye.
It actually shows the area above Foley and over top of Dead Hill.
We will pull the raw data for that and make sure to include it in. Yeah, new, new article, is there anything that folks think is important that we missed? Anything that was a surprise? All right. For transportation, as you guys know, roads are the largest part of your transportation system. We tried to be very careful to document that you guys are not responsible for the roads. I know it's challenging, you're the place that people call when they're upset, so we, we tried to document, we, we did a lot of descriptions for the different types of roads, the pazer ratings, the quality, if it's a primary, if it's, you know, using all these different classification systems. We did document truck routes, that's a new thing in there. We heard a lot about that from folks, that it's important to know where and be able to manage that. We did hear a couple of comments about carpool bots and the golf course across the way kind of functions is a informal carpool bot. There are some programs that can make a more formal one that folks may be more interested in using. And just touched briefly on public transportation. You guys have some systems in the area, but it didn't seem like it's super important at this time. Probably five years when you relook at this map, if your population trends continue, more folks are probably going to need a ride to get to the doctor or to shopping or something like that, so keep that way in the back of your mind. Pedestrians and bicycles, we heard a lot of positive response from that, and I think folks have been going up to Argentine and seeing that lap pathway and seeing that's pretty neat. There are some plans to have trails through the township right now. Both Livingston County and some other places have plans, so we want to document how folks were supportive of that. Air transportation, it seems weird you don't have that in there, but it can be important for location reasons if someone are trying to move to a place. No railroads, no water transportation. Complete streets, that's a bit weird to have in townships. The state of Michigan says you have to address it. It's something that's, the idea with complete streets is to make sure that all the different people who might use the road can use it. So cars, kids on bikes, older folks. And for you guys, it's mostly going to play out in, in new developments, making sure that there are potential pathways in there. And we identified some of your major traffic generators. Don't have a lot, but it's, it's mostly the cities around you. There are a couple of gravel pits that creates specific type of traffic. Any surprises or things we missed in the transportation article?
No, it was pretty comprehensive.
For community facilities then? You guys have a lot in your master plan already, we grabbed a little bit more. We obviously updated that you've got a new township hall here, but no one went to the old site today. We address fire and police, which again, you guys don't run, but you're the place that folks call to. And the, the ISO map is a new thing we've added. That's, that's how the insurance rates the likelihood of your house burning down if it catches on fire.
And how much you're going to pay.
Yes, how much you're going to pay to live in it until it burns down. And there are, there's a big difference in the areas of the township. There's some where it's, it's going to burn the room and then you're good. There's some where you just get marshmallows and you watch it burn. And so we're going to also be cognizant of that with, with where things get moved around. For both police and fire, we have heard from folks that are issues on the northern side of the township where your nine-one-one call will get dispatched to the wrong county, and then that has time for response, so that was something important included. One of the things that the planning commission requested we add is the emergency medical services. So that was at our last meeting, that's why it's not filled out. Very comprehensive look at what it's like to live here and what services are provided. Code enforcement, folks thought that was important, so we included a little bit of background in there. Waste management, this was a, a fun one. It's, it's pretty fun, a lot of communities, folks liked, for example, the concepts that come with a single carrier, single trash hauler, but didn't like single trash hauler. So it's, you, you like that there's less traffic, that the cost is less, that there's only going to be trash cans out one day a week, but you don't like that you lose the freedom to choose who you're going to do. So that is a tough thing, we documented that in here. We also documented that it'd be difficult to put a sanitary landfill in the township just because your roads aren't really good for it, you don't have big properties away from houses. So again, backstop, if someone comes, you can say, our master plan said we don't have that. For schools, the, the school enrollment has been shrinking, so I suspect there wouldn't be a problem with, with developments if someone came in with houses that went into the schools. And in the first, we matched the color on the map with the colors of the schools, and we had to do a couple of times to make sure we got the right orange for Fenton. So these guys were, were on detail on that. We do also document a couple of the other public services, the libraries, the senior centers, and the cemeteries. Parks and recreation, we document the private ones you've got here, and we're going to add the second gardens. We also note that you're the only township in the area that doesn't have a county park. So if you do want to do improvements here or somewhere else, this gives you something to go to the county and say, hey, what about us? So that's why we documented that in there. Remutilities, we touched all of them. The internet, there is a very vexing little triangle where you cannot get spectrum at all. And it's difficult for you guys to get there. Livingston County does have a broadband plan that they're working through that we are going to reference through here, it just dropped a couple of months ago, so we haven't had time to update that.
We won't address that, that area though, unfortunately.
Probably not, it's, it's tough. So were there any surprises or anything else that you think we need to add to that?
For the libraries, Linden wasn't included on there. We have Fenton and Hartland, but Linden also has some of the residents in Tyrone.
All right. We will add that in there. Does the, you know, does the library district go into the township or folks just go up there regardless and get the books?
What do you mean? The residents go there.
The, the residents go there, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone in the Linden schools in Hartland or in Tyrone Township.
Okay, follows the, got you. Thank you.
You did have chroming in there, right?
Yes. Yes, these are fantastic library names, by the way. I love them. All right, so we're going to, that was the, kind of the background portion. I'm going to be here real quick for these last eight bits. The existing land use, we've got the information for that. We're just kind of trying to make sure that we're looking at it the same way as the previous master plan, so we can do comparison, it makes sense. The fore-looking is the goals and objectives, and we tried to match the goals and objectives to the, the outline of the back. to the outline of the background section. I'm not going to go through all of them, the planning commission has touched these, and we tried to address what's here and what we heard from the planning commission, the community, what was important. If I say if there are any of these that you guys are really strong objections to or have very curious questions to, let us know or speak now. Right here, I just wanted to do a last little question section. We did this with the planning commission at the last meeting, so your future land use map has a whole bunch of different categories of future land uses, which, when I looked at it the first time, I was like, holy smokes, there's a lot going on there. And as I looked, it's really, it's really overkill. You should not have three different pyrologic categories, maybe half of them, maybe. So I wanted to test and see if these future land use concepts, areas, uses are consistent with what you guys feel is appropriate. So first is agricultural areas, and this is a slight deviation from your current master plan that calls it, I believe it's farm residential. The idea with the renaming is that we heard from folks that working farms are kind of important, and so this would kind of shift where a little bit more of an agricultural, it's not going to be large farming, but make sure that folks could do the truck farming or something like that if they wanted to. Next is natural preservation, that's currently what you've got. And then for the residential, lower density residential, medium density residential, higher density residential, not high, but higher, it's all relative to what you've got, and then lake residential. Right now, lake residential is in a separate category. It's like high density residential by the lakes, and by calling it out differently, it recognizes that that's a very different place to be, a very different development pattern. And then mobile home residential, that's just going to be where the parks are now, we're not proposing it for anywhere else. For commercial, again, a bit simplified, just a little commercial, so that's the small corner shop, which you don't have a bunch of, but you've got a couple of them poked around. General commercial, that would be like the gas station, kind of the bigger stuff. Then research office and industrial, so we've consolidated a couple of them down into one, and we're going to refine the scope of it so it's more on the light industrial, the high-tech research, those types of things, not the big heavy manufacturing stuff. And then public quasi-public, so like this building, parks, those types of things could be it. Recreation, which would include golf courses or public parks, and that's what we're proposing right now for future land use areas. So my question to you is that seem consistent with how you view future uses in the township?
Very much so.
All right. Well, I am done then.
And sort of listening to me talk. One more comment, this property. Where to come up, and it's been discussed several times, especially when we purchased it. When we earned the old building, we had a very small footprint over there, and we had a very limited lot, a lot of wetness, and we had an historic old building and basically no room for expansion due to our set of building. So our, we heard from our residents, they told us, yeah, don't put any lipstick on this pig by the new building. So when we found this building, the great thing about purchasing this building with the extra land on it is that we could have a township campus in the future, meaning that at some point, we're going to have to have our own fire department. Now we have a place for it. It's bought and paid for. We don't have to go research it, and it's right here next to the township. We're going to need a board of public works, a public works department, not a board of public works, but a public work department, similar to what Hartland's got. And that's, once growth starts going, we're going to need it. We're going to need to hire employees, trucks, we're going to have a place to put a garage, so we'll have a place to do it, maybe the police department, or a place to park police cars. So that's the intended long-term goal and plan is to have a township campus right here, so we don't have to go chasing them around and it's real convenient, we can keep an eye on it and monitor it, et cetera, et cetera.
Sounds very similar to what Hamburg Township has, all those right there.
And it works really well.
Well, if there's.
We don't have, we don't have quite the room at Hamburg.
No, no, they're, they're very special. I don't think that's really addressed well in the goals and objectives currently. If there's interest, we can start to firm up language of.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to see it documented so that the vision is not lost in the future. Because I'll tell you to go out and, and you know, you get a, say you put a millage out for your own fire department, the cost of that is land.
Yes.
And we're very glad it paid for, so.
Yep. I can, I can absolutely confirm that. I'm on City of Dexter council, and City of Dexter's been trying to figure out what to do with its fire station since 1997. And building's gotten a lot more expensive, land's gotten a lot more expensive over time. So it's really good to document and show good faith to your residents of, we did just throw this millage out there really nearly, it's, we have been working towards it, so we can incorporate that in here.
Appreciate it. Nothing else. Anybody had comments or questions or? I think you guys put together a very comprehensive master plan. It's a lot more pleasing, it's a lot easier to read, it makes a lot more sense than what we previously had, so good work.
Yep. Well, I tell applicants when they come before the planning commission and ZBA, if you hear crickets when you say, are there any questions, that means you've done your job. And these guys have been really rigorous at reviewing and revising. You get to see the very last here, but if you go on the project website, there are probably five or six versions of all of these that they've gone through. And they're doing a lot of work.
It's a great way to break in a lot of rookies, huh?
Yes, yes. That's all the comments, Zach, is that for the board's awareness, all the documents are on the master plan website, if you want to look at on your computer and map and blow it up. It's helpful.
So unless there's any other questions or comments, then we can just end this part of our meeting. Those on the planning commission, you don't have to stay, you can go home, be with your families, or do what you have to do after dinner or whatever, or if you want to stay and go through the rest of the meeting with us, you're welcome to do that, so. Thank you very much.
I do have one, one last question. For master plans in Michigan, there are two different ways that they can be adopted. And I guess this will be my forward-looking here. So our next steps are going to be polish off a little bit in here, the odds and ends of notes that you saw. We're going to have the next couple of sections that the planning commission gets to tear through. Eventually, the planning commission is going to have this whole thing together in one document with pictures and maps and all that stuff, and they're going to say, we like this, we recommend that the township board authorize distribution. And so it will come to you guys, and then you'll look at it and say, we like this, or maybe change these things, at which time you hit the button and you distribute it out to all your surrounding communities, utilities, railroads, to all those guys, and they have 63 days to provide comments on it. At the end of the 63 days, you can listen to their comments and revise it or not. Then the planning commission holds a public hearing on whatever they've put together. At that point, the planning commission can be the approving authority, or the township board by resolution can say, we want to be the approving authority. And my understanding was previously that the planning commission was going to be the approving authority, but I just wanted to clarify who wanted to be the ultimate approver for this.
Yeah, historically, you know, the planning commission has been an advisory board only. I think something to this magnitude should have a board. Unless anybody disagrees with us. Because we're the ones that have the answer to it.
Yes. Yep. I have seen communities where they, like, we don't want, it's the planning commission's thing, but it is a bit more rare. All right, thank you much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Zach though specifically, because when we picked Carlisle Hortman, we weren't sure what we were buying, you know, and we knew we were going to go through this process, and you've done a great job putting this stuff together for us. So you've been easy to work with. I know a lot of people would have torn their hair out for all the meetings that we've had. I do appreciate the work that you put in.
It's been fun. Thank you. Wait a minute while everybody shuffles down and we'll be right back. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number two. As you know, Ally did our parking lot, and there were a few things that ran over on the estimate. And one of the big things is we needed more asphalt, because when we dug, summed it up, it needed more asphalt than anticipated, and that cost us $12,236.20.
Was it just dinner?
What, I'm sorry?
Was it just dinner?
Yeah. So they had to beef it up. Any questions? I entertain a motion to approve the change order.
So support?
Been motioned and supported to approve the change order for $12,236.20 for the parking lot. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Item number three, the historical society wants to hold pioneer days again at the township hall. And we have a date requested here. Yep, Saturday, July 22nd. It was a great event, brought a lot of people out, pretty cool. I'd like to see it happen again, so if anybody is in opposition to it, speak up, otherwise it's.
So, support.
Yeah, they, they also have a Saturday, February 4th for history of bicycles, and I believe that's going to be here in the township hall. And then an urban vine workshop, making herbal salves and teas here in the township hall. So there's actually three.
So part of the same.
Yeah.
I assume the township hall and facility are available.
Yeah. So do I have a motion?
I support.
Is that the time for that as well is going to correspond as with last year from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m.?
Okay. It's been motioned and supported to approve the historical society event requests. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next, we have a couple of budget amendments. We do these throughout the year. Our health insurance is, we moved on up a little bit, because we've added a new employee, so it changed our health insurance for the year, so. Currently budget, $100,000, our budget right now is $130,000. We're suggesting an amendment for $130,000 to cover that for the rest of the year. And then we have to do a transfer out for the parking lot to capital outlay, and the current balance is $100,000, and we're suggesting amending $300 to $305,000. We have plenty of money to cover. And the other two are just how it shifts around from the general capital outlay. It's just internal to that. Any further discussion? I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have support?
Support.
Been motioned and supported to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Moving on, item number five is the meeting dates. We need a resolution every year for a meeting date listed here. For the board, planning commission, ZBA.
So resolved. Support?
Been resolved. Yes, supported to approve the meeting dates that's presented. Any further discussion? Madam clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, you may. David Walker.
Yes.
Kurt Schultz.
Yes.
Pearl Ferguson.
Yes.
Zach Tucker.
Yes.
Mike Cunningham.
Yes.
Jennifer Eden.
Yes.
Pam Molliver.
Yes.
So that resolution is supported and carries. Next is item number seven, request for the supervisor to negotiate fire service contracts. They're up next year, but we have to do public hearings for them and get the contracts going, so I'd like to get permission from the board to go ahead and negotiate those contracts.
Included in those discussions is going to be the 911 issues that we're having, EMS, covering the EMS.
Yeah, that's, that's a second issue.
So, support.
Been motioned and supported to have a supervisor to negotiate fire service contracts. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Item number eight.
Is there a reason we moved past item six?
It was six.
Six.
Yeah, we did.
Budget discussion.
Cover it.
Okay.
Item number six, 2023, 2024 budget discussion. You know, we're getting in the process to do our budget for next year, so we always talk about what we're going to plan and budget for. One of the things that we, I'd like to start off with is roads. Currently have $390,000 of ARPA funds available, and we have approximately $600,000 in our road fund, so that's $989,000. The first road that I suggest is that we do Runyon Lake Road from Gordon up to the township. The total project cost for that is $400,000, and the township's cost would be $200,000. The next one is Hartland Road, top part of Hartland Road, from Windy Ridge all the way to the city of Fenton up there by the elementary school. That's a $450,000 project, and we'll be on the hook for about $225,000 for that.
Mike and Matt, have you talked with the city when they were on new state road, you said they were going to do that under one project?
Yeah, and we tried to work with them to cut costs. Their contractor's a lot higher than ours, and the road commission has said, we're probably better not just doing it ourselves, it'll be a lot cheaper. So I tried.
Yeah, I know.
So I think that's another project that we could look at. And then if we want to do the third one, that put us at about $735,000, would be Runyon Lake Road from White Lake to the city. So we can either do two of them or three of them.
We got them all, you can do three.
Yeah.
Let the prices go up.
None of these are the ones the counties are going to step in on, right? I mean, we're pretty much sure that the county's not stepping in to do what we're supposed to do to fix the reserve.
We wish they, we wish they could, we could do a lot more. But so, you want us to budget for all three, and then we'll bring proposals forward, so.
I just got one question, Mike. When are they going to do, are we going to do from Hartland Road, White Lake Road from Hartland to Dead Hill?
We'll look at that one, we'll look at that one next year.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we need to, the next logical road would be White Lake East. These roads, we kind of jumped them because they were secondary roads and they weren't doing it, they weren't matching funds. Now they decided to match funds, so I'd like to get those caught up. White Lake is still in decent shape, but it's not, it's not like these roads, where they're almost a total failure. But yeah, then we pick up on White Lake and start heading east again. And then I think another one that we need to take a look at too is Karma. I was on that today. Carmer? That one's pretty bad. And then we still have the top part of Fenton Road from center north, Fossett Road, out past Lake Shannon, Bennett Lake Road is another one from White Lake East, or West, I'm sorry. It probably needs some work. At least, well, you know, a few roads that need to pay attention to, but I'd say getting into this Runyon Lake and that Hartland would be horrendous, getting those fixed would be really nice, so. We'll budget for that. As you saw, I asked our engineer to prepare a rough estimate, which is over what it's probably going to cost us for the sidewalk. For budgetary reasons, if we decide to do the sidewalk, they'll put that up for bid and obviously it'll come down, but we needed a number not to exceed for budgeting, so that's $33,000. Reason being is, you know, we have this new parking lot and when it's muddy and mucky, everybody's walking through the parking lot and with the dirt roasting and getting mud on their shoes and, you know, it's slippery out there. We've got senior citizens, people trying to back down and I think having a sidewalk for them to get out of their car and walk in is a good idea.
Was that, well, Mike, from, obviously from the building here all the way?
All the way up to the shed and then up past the door and shed. It was under, you see that? So I'd like to budget that.
We need to talk on our budgeting for the landscaping. We had touched on it a little bit. We pulled trees out and overgrown bushes and but never really made it pretty out here.
What would you like to do?
It's not, sorry, it's not.
I mean, is it possible, is it recurring on investment on beauty?
I'm not the landscaping guy, just to be clear.
You know, nobody's...
Come on, help me.
I'm with you on this. Yes.
It adds character to it. It makes it homely. I think it looks kind of trashy at the moment. I mean, I do like that we tore those old bushes and overgrown trees.
I would think that we're probably better off putting some new paint on the doors and the door taffs because that old brown is getting cracky and flaky, so. I don't know how many people want to, show, quick show ahead, how many people want to spend money on beautifying the front?
That's four, five.
All right. What's the number?
Yeah, why didn't you get it? My idea was I'd suggest you make it and find out what we would...
Well, why don't you put together a proposal to see what it looks like?
He could do that.
I'd rather say no to something that looks really nice as opposed to saying no, but I had no idea.
Well, let's...
I mean, at fair minimum, at least just something along the side of the building to help improve it or at least some mulch or, you know, I get as weeds and bushes.
Don't put barberries in those areas.
Well, I guess we have to come up with some sort of plan. We need to do that rather expediently, so.
All I can do is I can talk to Jeff Shoemaker, he follows the parking lot stuff and just tap in.
Draw something. Draw something.
Do that and give me a number so I can get it in the budget because we're firing this thing up right away.
All right, I'll call it tomorrow.
And then one of the things I've been having some discussion with the fire chiefs and they think it's a good idea, they make these high velocity ball pumps. They'll fill a fire up, yeah. Right now, there's a fire, the only place that they house is there's a dry hydrant on Lake Shannon that they can use or they run up to the city of Fenton to get water and drive back and they fill up these tubes that they put out front and they pump up to a fire. We own property on Turner, on Linden Road at Turner, it's a cemetery there. That would be a good location for one. Obviously, right here on Runyon Lake Road, this property would be a good location for one. And then over Alcoy and Denton Hill Road, there would be a need for one. We can prioritize one of the three locations this year. I think it's about $50,000 for the equipment, probably wanting to have it installed. I don't know if that's something you want to look at.
Is that per unit or is it...
Per unit.
Per unit, okay.
What that does is it...
Did they use their arco funds to aid it on our township with the fire?
What's that?
Can they use their arco funds?
For our fire. I wish. So, you know, we need to start looking at ways that we can help our residents, especially with their fire.
Is it, it's not, I'm assuming it's small, right? I mean, it's not going to be like a huge facility or anything like that.
Yeah, so what they do is they just dig a well and then they put a pipe on it, it's a wood, it comes up, they come in, it's got power there. They come, throw the switch, fills the fire truck and off they go.
It would improve response times would be a good idea.
It gets more water to the fire a lot quicker.
Yeah.
Good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
There's no hydrant in my house, so.
Yeah, you know, so I'm thinking I'll go ahead and budget $80,000 for it to see what, you know, I haven't contacted an excavating company, but I'm thinking they're a well company, I don't know what it costs to dig a well. I think more than $30,000 bucks. It's so hard now. So is there any other needs that we need to budget for going forward other than that?
The generator.
Remember we talked about that? Yeah.
$90,000.
Yeah, we needed more than one with the propane and the diesel. The what?
Water, fire.
Yeah, I would say.
You just asked, is there anything else?
Yeah. All right, so with that, then we'll conclude that.
Well, there's no, there's no items.
No, there's no items, it's just a discussion point. It'll all get approved when we approve the budget. So that takes me back to number eight, it's request to extend the lawn maintenance contract for the township and cemeteries. This guy's been doing it for a long time, same guy, price not being around the peace,
It's the same price as the...
It's the same price. Decades.
Yes.
So, yeah, support.
Been motioned and supported to extend the lawn maintenance contract for the township hall and cemeteries. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is our employee health insurance policy review. It went up 6.7% from $120,000 to $128,000. In the industry world, it's probably not that large of an increase.
No, we, when I contacted them, due to our aging group of employees, it's going to age, it's based upon age. So that's part of it.
Any questions or comments about that? Then I'll entertain a motion.
So, support.
Been motioned and supported to approve our insurance quote for the year. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. We've concluded all of our new business, we have no miscellaneous business. Public remarks. If we have any public remarks coming up, have a seat.
Scott, Ethan, Runyon Lake Road. All right. Mike, we finally heard something on the property here, so I know you brought it up, it wasn't on the master plan, but you did bring it up so you could kind of, we've been trying to want to know, everybody's been wanting to know. All right, fire departments. I remember back, we went to the Deerfield Fire Authority, we had meetings, you know, it was pretty quiet, I won't put out a line, but they have to deal with it again. But we got fire departments all over. I mean, I'd love to have our own fire department, but we realized that we saved a lot of money contracting out, okay? My only thing is now, I really, I was really pushing for a fire department, is response time. And I would think in the future, if we're 10 minutes away from each building we're contracted with, I think we'd be better off to put full time, full time staffs on all these locations in all these communities. Instead of putting more buildings in, we need full time firemen to get to the house. You know, you ain't got to have a whole crew, just, they should, I said this at the Deerfield Fire Authority, is have small crews at each station where phone rings, they're there and not driving to the station, get the truck and come into the house. That's a better, that's better serving for the community because we got buildings. You don't need to spend a billion on property. And I hope, I really hope, public works, I don't know exactly when you were talking about public works, I got a feeling and I know how I feel is I don't want to see any expansion of the sewer system after what was going on in the past. We don't have to. And public roads, that's the county's responsibility. So I hope when it comes time to do this properly, I think we should get out of right now and do a survey. Don't do a special survey, but want to do a survey next time. We talked about this, the planning commission, is let's put some ideas out there and let's see what the people think about this problem. You know, you want your fire department, you know, see what the people want to do. I know we got a lot of needs, we got an aging community, people want a center, someplace to go, you know, you guys want to add on here so we can have a community center, you know, if we add on here, you know, people's pressure, Pimpleball's big, so maybe we can use this property, some of this property for events and a little more parking. So like I said, I'm not against all of it, I'd like to see a broader picture of what we can do with it. Put our tax out, dollars, more of the use on, put manpower to help us. We had one problem, I know you guys have, it's been pushed to you guys, this is off another subject, the planning commission already worked on it. And since the planning commission worked on it, an advertisement went out and it was for pee bodies. You guys are getting it. And I was at the pee bodies for the ice plant, okay? And it's supposed to be sent to you guys for the board. Am I right? You guys are definitely, the planning commission's done it. So they did, once we had the meeting, there was questions asked, answers given. And they were told what they could do and what they couldn't do. And I, as a resident, stood up and says, are we going to have events here other than ice playing? And he specifically said, no. I said, what if you do, could you please make sure you go to the board and go to the planning commission and get this all approved? Okay? So since then, on one of our public sites, I won't mention which one, the advertising went out. He's advertising at a party, he's having an event from 10:00, question mark. He was given a specific time to close the event if he was approved by the board of which he has event. So in light of what he's done in the past with wristbands, alcohol, he's totally coming out of alcohol, I'm concerned. I'm more concerned, I wasn't against it, honestly, it's not my neighborhood, but I do have to deal with traffic coming in because I am a neighborhood. I think we were told it misled, it's public. And I hope, I hoped you guys would send it back to the planning commission and make it go public again. Because I'm, if I discuss it with the planning commission, I brought the information to Ross, he's not here. And I think it's public safety wise, I could revolve it and I'll say it at the board if you guys do take it on, disregard what I tell you. It's maybe 10 o'clock tonight, it's a little late. And in light of what I've just talked, in light of what he's done, I don't trust the situation anymore. Sure only for safety reasons. Because I think if he's going to do, you give an inch, he takes a mile. And I think she's, who's going to babysit it? I'm really concerned. I don't know if you guys have looked at this? I'm sure, Mike, you've been up to date with Ross. Okay? I know you can't comment. But other than that, I appreciate your time.
Anyone else?
Jeanette Lopeta, Fuller Drive, and representing the watch group. I wonder if, when you're talking about the, I don't know what you call them, but the different places that you would have the pumps and the wells for the fire department? Has the fire departments, have they been asked what they think about this? Would it be a solution, if that would be a good solution? Oh, they have been? Okay, good. So if they're...
If you were listening, I mentioned it.
I was listening. I didn't hear you. Okay, so the fire departments are all in favor of this, they say that this is a good idea to have. Okay, good. So the plan that you spoke of, Mike, regarding the intention for this building, where is this plan? Where was it ever talked about or drawn up or anything?
Public comment.
Through public comment?
This is public comment.
Okay. All right, so obviously I'm not going to get an answer, but I would like to know where the plan is that Mike spoke of, the intention for these 10 acres, all the different things that you talked about that this land should be used for. I don't ever remember hearing anything and I kept asking the planning commission if they had anything and they didn't either. So I'd like to see a plan, that plan that you speak of, wherever it is, wherever it's written down, what meeting or wherever it was put together, descend to the planning commission so that for the planning, the master plan, that that information can be included in there. Public really does want to know what's being, what is going to be done with this land. It is a question that people ask. And then in regards to talking about the landscaping versus the sidewalk and all that, you know, I think most of you own homes. The homes take a lot of maintenance and upkeep. Is there not a maintenance plan for this building? I mean, I know as a homeowner, I look out into the future and I say, these certain things are going to need to be done. I would assume that there should be a plan for that so that we're not talking about painting doors and whether, you know, it's time to put mulch down. And I think that would be lovely and see some flowers and things there. I still highly disagree with the $33,000 to put in or whatever it ends up being costing to put in a sidewalk when there's no plan that the people have seen for what this land is going to be used for. So again, my request is that the planning commission receive that information that you spoke of. Obviously, it exists somewhere, that it's been talked about before. I've never heard it, I've never heard anybody else and the planning commission didn't know about it either. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think that there's no more public comment. They have no more business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, support.
Been motioned and supported to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.